Now it's.
Hello?
If you do it.
Okay, so I need to go.
I got you.
What you doing?
It is six o'clock and I'd like to welcome you to the Thursday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, meeting of the Board of Commissioners. And this evening, I've asked Commissioner Clark to lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Booker to lead us in our pledge. If you'd stand with me, please.
How much kind and gracious, heaven on earth, we just thank you for this day. We just thank you for what you mean to this nation, to this country, to the people of this nation, Lord. And Lord, we just gather here tonight to do the people's business, Lord. And we ask that we do it with clear minds and conscience and do what's best for the citizens of Lake County each and every day. Or be with our first responders all over this community each and every day and night. Lord, protect them, leave a hedge of protection around them, and let them be able to go home to their families each and every night. We ask all this in your presence now. Amen.
Amen.
Do you want me to pledge?
Let it be.
This is why I'm being honest, States of America, and to the Republic of which is Kansas. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have an addition to our agenda tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I move to add item twenty-one point five to the published agenda to consider authorizing the chairman to sign a cover letter and transmit the draft comprehensive plan update to the Coastal Regional Commission and the Department of Community Affairs for review.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Rofoski. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Fendig. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous, we'll add item twenty-one point five. All right, consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move to present the consent agenda for general business and finance with the exception of anything a commissioner would like to pull.
Now, it's a motion to approve?
Yeah, a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item three.
All right.
And I'll second it.
You'll second the motion and then you want to pull item three?
Yes.
All right, any other discussion, any other items? All right, so I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for general business and finance with the exception of item three. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous, so we're pulling item three. And Commissioner Booker, you may have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pulled this item just because I don't think it's enough information for me. While I do have a better understanding of this item, but it was first on the Finance Committee, then it was pulled. And I just got a little, I don't understand, so I'm just gonna pull it for now. And hopefully, I will get a better understanding about our donation policy. This has really nothing to do with the sheriff because this is about us approving this item. He is well within his rights to do, to accept this. And, but I don't, I really don't know what our donation policy is now, even though I've been on the Finance Committee and on the commission for ten years. So, that's why I pulled it.
Yes, sir. Ms. Munson and Sheriff Jones here to talk about that, but Commissioner Booker is asked to explain our policy there.
All right, good evening. So, for Glen County Board of Commissioners, if someone makes a donation, we have to bring it to the board for acceptance, and we don't have to provide a lot of detail, but we do usually say, especially if it's like a, if it's just a person, like donating twenty dollars or fifty dollars to animal control, sometimes they want credit, sometimes they don't. So if they want credit, we'll say this person donated. If it's just, you know, multiple donations, especially animal control, we have a lot of these, we'll bring a lump sum group and say, we've had, you know, four thousand dollars in donations, and we're asking the board to accept this and amend our budget. We have to increase revenue and expenses to accept that. So for our purposes, with donations, they have to be accepted by the board. Elected officials are different, that's not required for elected officials, but for anything that comes into the county, those donations have to be accepted by the board.
All right, and any?
I don't have any other following.
You don't have any other following, okay. Any other discussions or questions while we have Ms. Munson up front? All right, then, gentlemen, are we ready to discuss item three and vote on it?
I got, I have a question. Is this in the form of a grant?
No, sir, it's a donation between myself and one of the vendors, or the sheriff's office and one of the vendors.
Not, not, not the sheriff, clarification, not for the sheriff, but for the sheriff's office.
For the sheriff's office to benefit the citizens of Glen County and bring some relief on y'all where you don't have to pay that money. It's donation slash grant, according to what word you want to use for it.
It is in the form of a grant as well, you said slash grant.
I think it needs to be noted, it is not an advance. So I think that was where some concerns came in. It's not an advance on commissions or anything like that. This is a grant, and I've read the contract myself. It says this is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars donated to the sheriff's office to use to purchase equipment or technology. It's not related to any kind of advance that we would owe back to that company or anything like that.
Okay.
So not for salaries or?
No.
或者是?
It's for, uh.
Additional personnel, it's for equipment?
It's for cars and equipment, to put in those cars, because we still have three cars sitting at a shop waiting to get repaired from the chase that happened, because we can't, one, get nobody to work, two, you can't get parts in to replace them. So I'm sitting there with three cars down. A lot of may perceive that this was taken away from the inmates of the sheriff's office. It doesn't have anything to do with them. They still getting their full benefits of everything they need and not want, but need.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. Any other discussion on this, or do I entertain a motion?
I'd, I'd like, I think it's a, a, a great thing. It's an illustration of the job y'all do down there, Sheriff, that whoever this person recognized that and thought it was able to help out with, especially in, with crime the way it is in this nation as a whole, I think that speaks volumes for your office. And if they got more money, tell them we're more than welcome to take it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Do I entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize a budget amendment to increase revenue and expenditure budgets in the Capital Projects Fund for one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, utilizing donated funds accepted by the sheriff's office and deposited into the Capital Projects Fund for purchase of two sheriff's office patrol vehicles and equipment.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofoski, a second by Commissioner Clark. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand.
I'm abstaining.
So we have six, four, and one abstention. All right, thank you, Sheriff.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Munson. Did we vote to approve the consent agenda?
No.
With that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve our consent agendas for general business and finance.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I thought we did.
Did we, did we get that?
We pulled, Alan, and we didn't go beyond that.
Did we?
We did not approve it yet.
We have a motion and a second and a vote for those other?
I seconded.
All right, I just don't want to lose our place here. And we took a vote on consent, all right. Told you it's been a long time. All right. Item number twenty-one is a public hearing. Public hearings will be limited to thirty minutes with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present the group's position in the time allocated, and your cooperation is greatly appreciated. Item number twenty-one is to receive citizens' comments regarding the draft twenty-two thirty-three Glen County, Georgia, comprehensive plan. And Maurice Postal is here, and Clark's note on this, the support documentation with this item was updated on eight fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
Good evening, Commissioners, Maurice Postal Planning and Zoning. If you recall from the first public hearing we had all the way back in January, the state requires the county to hold a number of public hearings during the comp plan update process. We're now at the point in the process of holding the second public hearing. After a series of stakeholder meetings and public listening sessions, the Coastal Regional Commission has prepared a draft update to the comp plan. State rules require the county to hold a public hearing after the draft is completed, but before we've transmitted that to both the Coastal Regional Commission and the Department of Community Affairs. With that, I'd like to hand it over to Aaron Carpenter from the Coastal Regional Commission, who'll give you a brief update on what we've accomplished so far and what the process is moving forward.
All right, thank you. Eric, if you would, state your name again for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is Aaron Carpenter, and I'm the Planning Director of the Coastal Regional Commission. Thank you all for inviting me to be here tonight, and as Maurice said, tonight's not about adopting the plan, but rather transmitting it to DCA. State law regulates that they have forty days to review it, and in order to meet our October thirty-first deadline for adoption, it puts us in August, and that'll begin the forty-day review. Tonight, I'm going to give you a little bit of an update on the process that we've done so far and the final steps that you have to update the comprehensive plan. So I'm going to review the timeline, I'm going to go over the public participation strategy that we've used so far to update the plan, and I'm also going to give a little bit of an overview, some of the differences between the one you have now, the character areas, and the community work program, and again, those final steps. So for the timeline, we did have the first public hearing back in January of seven, January seventeenth, and that began this process. We had planned for four stakeholder committee meetings, but we did end up having five. We also had planned for five public listening sessions, we have two of those left, and as you can see at the yellow dot, we are in August. We're having a second public list, public hearing tonight, and then we're going to transmit to DCA for a forty-day review if you approve so. That leaves September, that's pretty much the whole month is for the state to review the plan, and then that puts October fifth as hopefully the day that you all vote to approve this plan. So looking at that public participation program that I was mentioning, we did have quite a robust strategy to get public input. It's safe to say with a survey that over a thousand people had the opportunity to have their voice heard in the updated this plan. I've been here for three years, and I've worked on probably close to twenty communities so far, and that's the most response we've ever had to one of our surveys. So congratulations to Glen County and the citizens that were involved, and I think we had some really good meetings and some really good input. And yeah, I'm proud of the level of response that we had received on the updated this plan. And by the way, if you have any questions throughout, please interrupt me, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What's the difference between the stakeholders' meetings and the public listening sessions?
So the stakeholder meetings, the stakeholder committee was appointed by this board, and they were our primary way of receiving feedback for the plan update. All of those meetings were open to the public, they were advertised both on, you know, newspaper, radio, and I know the county websites and social media. So those were open to the public, and they were given opportunity at all of those meetings to provide feedback, but from the CRC's perspective, the primary purpose of those meetings was to get the feedback that we needed to update the required elements of the plan.
But technically, since all of these meetings were open to the public, there were twelve opportunities for the public to hear and?
Correct.
And engage.
Correct, yes, sir. Thanks. So this is an overview of the table of contents of the plan. In orange, those are optional elements, they're not required, but you do have them in your plan, and the green are the required sections. And the way that you can approach this as a top-level view down, it begins pretty broad, and it gets more specific the further you get, go down into the plan. Tonight specifically, I'm going to talk a little bit more about the land use and the community work plan further on. So this is just a little bit of an overview of the difference between the plan you have now versus the one that we're asking you to transmit to DCA. The one you have now is 118 pages, not counting appendices. The one before you tonight is 97 pages, not counting appendices. Did we get rid of that much material? No, it's mostly formatting, fewer pictures, there's really not much of a difference in terms of content, except for the three additional sections that we added. Looking at the character areas, I do have another couple of slides on that following that, so I won't touch on that too much here, but there were 17 in your existing character areas map, that is now 16. A few were consolidated or reduced, and we introduced a couple of new ones as well. Community work program, in your 2018 plan, you have 81 action items, and then you, when you have 66. And then you see down below, in 2018, you reported on what you said you were going, or the county was going to attempt to do in 2013. And I won't go over all of those numbers, but essentially there was improvement this, this time around versus the progress that was made in 2018 on the 2013 community work program versus the progress you've made on the 2018 community work program. Is that clear? Are there any questions on that?
I, I just have a couple of questions. If you could explain coastal resiliency?
Okay.
What do you, what, what do, I guess, we mean by this? And housing, what do we mean by housing? Is it affordable housing, homelessness, or what?
Sure. So from a coastal resiliency point of view, we approached it mainly from the hazards that threaten Glen County because of its proximity to the coast. Mainly sea level rise is, is dealt with a lot, you know, flood, flood zones, and that's mainly coastal resiliency. It does take a little bit of a disaster response, a few paragraphs are included on that. From the housing, it's not necessarily affordable housing. It is, it gives you some data to capture where the county is, and I'm happy to present more on that in depth if you would like, because for me personally, we, some interesting data in terms of the county and where they are with the housing stock, where your population's going, what your population is, and what type of housing folks might be looking for in the future. Okay?
Ready to move forward? Okay.
So character areas, quite a few updates. In your existing plan, you have a future land use map and a character areas map. You only need one, and because of really timing, and it becomes difficult to make the two homogenous, if you have a future land use map and a character areas map, they can conflict, and so we elected to go, or the county elected to go with just the character areas. And looking at this map, I know it's small, but that is 2018 versus 2023 and what is proposed. Most of the zones did receive revisions in terms of what zoning districts are allowed. There was some cleanup of that, and again, there was just some, some zones that weren't very clear in why it was a character area. So from, from a planning perspective, a character area is a geographical area that is unique somehow, and we, we cleared a lot of that up. Are there any questions about the character areas map? Alrighty. All right, looking at the 2023 work program, this is what the county is suggesting that you undertake over the next five years if adopted. You have the responsible party, estimated cost, potential funding source, and the priority, whether that happens over the next one or two years, three to five or beyond. And I just include an example of what those tables look like. There are, I believe, 81 items in, or no, 66 items in this work program. Some of them rolled over from 2018, and then some of them are new. All right, and that leaves us where we are now. So over the next few steps, again, you have until October 31st to have an updated plan in order to maintain your qualified local government status. Transmitting tonight gives the state and the regional commission 40 days to review the plan, which puts it at September 26th and gives you the month of October to get a plan adopted to maintain that QLG status. DCA, you know, they, they are given 30 days on their own, typically don't take that long, but it really depends on timing and how many other communities are submitting a plan for review as well. But as soon as we get that back, your, and their approval, you're able to adopt, and hopefully our target is October 5th. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, any, any questions?
Is this October 5th date cast in stone?
No, sir. If you get it back beforehand and you want to adopt it beforehand, you can do that. You have a, well, you can adopt it anytime after that, but before you lose your QLG is October 31st, so there's two meetings in October. Preferably either September, October would be your target.
And since we released this, I think earlier this week, we'll have a 30-day review for the public, and then we'll be able to meet again with the comments, that kind of?
Correct.
Is the process.
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, anything else? All right, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone here that would like to speak to the CRC for our comprehensive plan, if they'd like to come forward, state their name for the record, and each speaker will have five minutes if you'll state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith, and I hope some others will be moved to speak to this, this item, and for some reason, my timer is not starting.
Ours did, Mr. Smith.
Okay, I'm sure you will. Ah, there it starts. My wife and I have owned a home on St. Simon's Island at the edge of a tidal marsh for 30 years. Our house was built in 1946, in 1942, but not until seven years ago did the tide push storm water under our house. I know this is true because I crawled under it before we bought it and found no tide water had ever come under to wash away the construction debris and old cigarette butts and so on from when it was built. In the last seven years, the tide has swept under our house three times, and that's why I'm going to spike, speak tonight about only 1% of the 137 pages in the draft of this comprehensive plan. This document has many good recommendations, but it is, for the most part, indigestible and incomprehensible. Let's look at just eight of the 16 bullet points in section 5.6 on resiliency. The first bullet point claims that, quote, "A better understanding of the local impacts of sea level rise and other coastal hazards is needed," unquote. I agree, but I do, did not find any explanation of how that better understanding will come about, or who will create that better understanding. The third bullet point recommends that the county, quote, "Develop a plan for retreating from flood zone areas accordingly," unquote. According to what? According to whom? Retreating by whom? And retreating to where? Then there is number six, quote, "Provide assistance to properties subject to flooding," unquote. What kind of assistance? At what cost to the public? And why is this assistance to properties and not to property owners? Properties don't need assistance, people need assistance. And if the drafters of this couldn't get that right, how can we trust them on other matters? Number seven is one of the most indigestible, quote, "Utilize the new flood maps to promote purchase of flood insurance," unquote. How does flood insurance promote resiliency? How does it promote safety? Why would you even take part in pimping for the flood insurance industry? By the way, my wife and I own six properties on, in the county, and we have no insurance of any kind on anything. We don't want it. Number eight is illogical, quote, "Better maintain storm drainage systems to reduce the chances of future flooding," unquote. Storm drainage systems have two negative effects or impacts. Either they allow tidal surges to travel further inland, or they increase the amount of flooding along our marshes by preventing storm surges to travel inland to areas where no development should have been allowed in the first place. Storm drainage is a sham. Number 10 is my favorite, quote, "An alternative evacuation plan for St. Simon's Island is needed if the FJ Torres Causeway is impassable," unquote. Well, good luck finding an alternative evacuation plan that will work during an actual hurricane or storm surge. Which brings me to number 14, quote, "A dedicated emergency management shelter for critical workforce is needed," unquote. How about dedicated emergency shelters for ordinary citizens who are not able to evacuate from the islands or low-lying areas of the county? Let me end on number 15, quote, "The county should protect the existing beaches from the impacts of coastal storms," unquote. Those beaches are created by tides and storms. A current may create even better beaches or wash away some of the ones of most value to our tourism industry. In any case, it is not possible to protect beaches from those impacts. What happened in one beachfront area in Hawaii because of wind and fire last week can happen next week here because of wind and water, and none of this incomprehensible gobbledygook in this document can prevent that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to come and speak on, on item 21 of our comprehensive plan? Any other comments tonight? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion of public hearing. Mr. Attorney, do we need to take an action on this, or that we're just opening our, our period of review?
No, no action on 21 is necessary, but you do need to take action on 21.5.
That's next time. All right. Item number 21.5, consider authorizing the chairman to sign a cover letter and to transmit the draft comprehensive plan update to the Coastal Regional Commission and the Department of Community Affairs for review, 21.5. Mr. Postal, do you want to address the process that we're going through here?
State regulations simply say that a cover letter has to be attached to the transmittal, doesn't say that a formal resolution needs to be done, but we thought it'd be proper to authorize you to sign the, the cover letter that has to go with the transmittal.
Okay, so this is not an approval of the comprehensive plan, this is just a, a, an approval to submit the transmittal letter?
That's right, this is just a transmittal to Coastal Regional Commission and DCA just for review, this is not approval of the plan.
All right. Any commissioners, any questions? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the chairman to sign a cover letter and to transmit the data draft comprehensive plan update to the Coastal Regional Commission and the Department of Community Affairs for review.
Second. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Rofolski, a second by Commissioner Swett first. All right, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item number 22 is a public hearing for land use for SUP 5461-510 Bladen Road Special Use Permit. Consideration of an application for a special use permit for a place of public assembly at 510 Bladen Road, parcel 02-01863 in the Forest Agricultural Zoning District. Timothy and Joyce Bowie, owners, and Mr. Postal.
Good evening, Maurice Postal again. The applicant's requesting a special use permit for a place of public assembly at 510 Bladen Road, which is in the Forest Agricultural Zoning District. The zoning ordinance requires any place of large public assembly that's at least five acres in size, NFA zoning, to obtain a special use permit from the commission, and the site is 64 acres. The Buies are currently operating a wedding event venue in the existing barn on the, uh, barn on the property known as the Bowie Barn. The event venue has been operational since 2007, according to the property owner. Mr. Bowie stated at the MPC, August MPC meet, public hearing, that the property hosts 15 to 20 weddings a year, and that music at the events must stop by 10:00 PM, and all guests must leave his property by 11:00 PM. And the property owner actually has had a current home occupation license for this address since 2002 for a lawnscaping business. And this is the zoning map of the property, showing the home on the property and the barn where the wedding event venue is held, and all surrounding properties are in FA zoning. These are pictures of the barn. And there was one citizen that showed up at the August MPC hearing, a neighbor, neighboring property owner Deborah Wilson. She stated that loud music comes from wedding receptions in the barn, and she said that she would like the applicant to close the barn doors when there's loud music, and she also called and left a voicemail, voicemail with the staff wanting to let the board know that the subject property, according to her, is currently for sale and has been on the real estate market since June. And the MPC did a vote to unanimously recommend approval, and these are your possible motions tonight, and the property owner, Mr. Bowie, is here tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Postal. Before we open the public hearing, commissioners, are there any questions or discussion?
My comment is, what's different with this than what they've already got? I mean, there are, it's already a, a venue for that.
This would just make it proper, this?
Make it what?
It would make it proper, the zoning ordinance requires large event venues and FA zoning to have a special use permit. Mr. Bowie's been operating this since 2007, and he hasn't had that special use permit.
They had, they, they've never had a special use permit for this property?
No, not for the large place of public assembly.
I see, you need to pick up a little louder, get closer to the mic.
Sorry, he has not had a special use permit for a large, a place of part, large public assembly in FA zoning, which is what he's seeking tonight.
So what were they under prior to that?
He was just operating the wedding event venue without that special use permit since 2007.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion before we open the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing for SUP 5461-510 Bladen Road. Anyone that wishes to come up and speak in opposition to SUP 5461, please come forward, state your name for the record, to speak in opposition. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Anyone that wishes to speak in favor of SUP 5461, please come forward, state your name for the record, please. Short hearing.
My name's Miranda Smith. I just have a question, because I've been there, it's a nice place, I'm definitely not in opposition, so I, I didn't stand up then, but did someone complain? Why are they just doing this? Why are they just doing this now, is my question? And did they not operate under a business license? Or why is this just coming up now? It's just a question out of curiosity.
Okay.
Now, this was not the subject of a code enforcement complaint. Mr. Bowie came into the Occupational Tax Office to get a business license for the wedding event venue. And it's at that time that we came to know of this issue.
Okay. So, yeah. Anyone else that wishes to come forward and speak in favor of SUP 5461? All right. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and then commissioners, we're back to you.
Just so I'm clear, they had no business license and no special use permit?
That's correct, not for the wedding event venue.
And they've been doing this since 2007?
That's right, according to the property owner.
And the property owner's here if he wishes to speak to it?
Okay. I would like to hear why he didn't have a business license or a special use permit.
Thank you. I'm Tim Bowie, the owner. We did have a license. When I would go in and get my landscape license, Ms. Johnson, who is in charge of the business license, she said, just add it to your business license. So that's how we operated until this special use thing come in 18 or 19, I can't remember when. I went to the meeting across the road, and then COVID hit, and that's how I've operated.
You thought you had it up under your regular business?
I did, yes. Ms. Johnson, it was on my application. And I wouldn't say 2007, we let some, we got an oak tree, we let somebody get married under. That went on to about 2011 or 12, until we started getting busy.
Got you. All right, thank you. And I'm under the understanding, as well as you, that you could have multiple businesses under one business license, is that correct, prior to?
That's what, that's the way she explained it to me.
I see. So now that has changed, and now you need?
This is a whole separate thing that's come about since?
Since COVID or whatever?
No, since the venue on the island, I think.
I see. Okay. But you did have a license. It, it was a broad license that covered what you were doing and other, other businesses that you had at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we've closed the public hearing. Commissioners, any other questions? Maurice, can you put a motion up?
Mr. Chairman, since this is my district, I move to approve SUP 5461 as presented.
Second. All right. We've got a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, second by Commissioner Rofoski and Booker. That is right. And any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed?
I have to abstain, as I have delivered many guests up to that property.
All right, so, 641 abstention, motion carries. Thank you. All right, item number 23 is ZM 5514 3740 Habersham Street Rezone. Consideration of an application to rezone 3740 Habersham Street Parcel 03-08679 from the R61 Family Residential Zoning District to the Local Commercial LC Zoning District. Janelle Holland, agent for Angelo Dark, New Life Interfaith Christian Church owner. And Mr. Postal, we're back to you.
The applicant is requesting to rezone the site from the R61 Family Zoning District to Local Commercial. Existing church is a non-conforming use in R61 Family Residential Zoning. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property in preparation for its sale, and would like to bring the existing use into conformance for sale to another church. And this is the zoning map, showing the site adjacent to both commercial and residential, residentially zoned lots. This is a picture of the existing church and Sunday School building. And at the Mainland Planning Commission, the MPC voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning action. And these are your motions tonight, and the property owners are here tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Postal. Commissioners, anything you want to add before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing for ZM 5514 3740 Habersham Street Rezone. Anyone that wishes to come forward and speak in opposition to this rezone, please come forward and state your name for the record.
You want to come for approval, not opposition?
All right. Anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Those that wish to speak in favor of ZM 5514 3740 Habersham Street, please come forward and state your name for the record, please, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, commissioners. Janelle Holland with New Life Interfaith Christian Church. As Mr. Postal said, in preparing to get the property ready for resale, we discovered that the property had been built in 1966. We purchased it in 1997, but it had never been rezoned for a commercial.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else to speak in favor of ZM 5514? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and commissioners, we're back to you.
I'll make a motion, and that's in there. There's other discussion? Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ZM 5514 as presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Booker, a second by Commissioner Rofoski and Tosterson.
I'm good with it, but I?
Yeah, you did. I thought I heard a second down here. So, second by Commissioner Rofoski. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number 24, ZM 5506 240 Merchant's Way Rezone. Consideration of an application to rezone 240 Merchant's Way Parcel Number 03-0, I'm sorry, 03-20983 from the General Commercial GC Zoning District to the Medium Residential MR Zoning District. Chris Amos, CSCC Inc., agent for Wynn Kohow and Ding Monk Soon, owners. And I apologize if I mispronounced. And Mr. Postal.
Sorry. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property from general commercial zoning to medium residential. The applicant is proposing to construct a 112 townhome unit development on the 10.79 acre site at a density of 10.38 units per acre. And medium residential zoning does allow for a density of up to 16 units per acre. This is a zoning map, showing the property, showing the Nally Auto Lot to the north and west, the legacy apartments to the east, and Walmart to the northeast. And this is a site layout plan of the 110 unit development. And the Mainland Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning action. These are your possible motions for tonight, and Mr. Amos is in the audience.
Can you go back to the map, Maurice, please?
Sure.
That, not that, the one before that. I just want to get my bearings. Okay, thank you. You can go back to the motions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Postal before we open the public hearing?
Yes, I'm not opposed to this, but my concern is that you have a superfund site right back at the corner there. So stormwater runoff is a consideration. Has staff looked at that?
Yes, we have, and especially with the apartments to the south of the old elementary school. The EPA says that the site is capped and that it is safe for adjoining properties.
Okay, is there any special consideration for the stormwater runoff? I mean, or it doesn't matter since it's supposed to be?
I wouldn't say it doesn't matter, but I'm not an expert on that issue, and I couldn't give you an intelligent answer on that.
I'm confused. If you're not an expert, then, so I guess my point is that we just saw that in our comprehensive plan, and we talked about coastal resiliency. And to me, this would be a question around resiliency if we don't be mindful of stormwater runoff when it comes to contaminated sites.
Sure, I absolutely agree. And like I said, the EPA does say that the superfund site is capped and shouldn't cause concerns for adjoining properties.
I'm not sure, I'm satisfied with that answer.
Sure, I can, I can try to get you more information, but, sure.
All right.
Jason Hartman, Engineering Director, Glen County. Can you restate the question about stormwater?
I'm just?
Get into the mic.
Jason Hartman, Engineering Director, Glen County. Can you restate the concerns about the stormwater? Maybe I can assist with?
Well, I'm just making sure that we have a stormwater plan that takes in consideration that this is a superfund site. This is not just a regular toxic waste site.
Sure.
This is a superfund site. And I hear what you're saying, that EPA is saying it's capped, but nine times out of 10, they don't live here. We do. And so I just want to make sure that there's no future issues with this once this complex is built. I mean, I know it's next to the highway, there's not really any residential around, but if it, if for some reason it gets out into the environment, it can create havoc.
What type of plans do we have in reference to this, Maurice? Is that area in the corner like a stormwater pond that I'm seeing up there on the left?
Yes, Mr. Amos could probably answer his question.
Okay.
All right. Do we have any other questions before we open the public hearing?
I have a question. Could you go back to the GIS map that we were looking at? So the black line is the property line. What's the dotted line that's showing?
Maybe some type of easement. Chris, do you know?
Yeah.
Would you come up and do it now, or wait?
Come up now.
And I have one other question also, is what's the property just, I guess, southeast of it, down there that I can't see?
The yellow?
Yeah, the?
That's the school district headquarters.
The what?
The school district headquarters.
Oh, okay.
So first off, there's been a?
State your name for the record.
I'm sorry, Chris Amos, CSCC Incorporated. First off, there's been a fair amount of environmental investigation on the site done. There are monitoring wells on the property. The only contamination that was found on the, monitoring wells are still there. They're in the process of getting the monitoring wells removed. The only thing that the monitoring wells have found was some contamination of groundwater that's about 30 feet deep, and we're not going to be, they're not going to be digging anything 30 feet deep. So the plan will consider that we need to stay out of that zone that does have some contamination. But they've been monitoring this for a very long time. The problem, as I read the report, is not getting worse. And as, as Maurice, Mr. Postal said, the EPA's opinion is that the site is properly capped and being properly monitored, and should not be an issue for adjoining properties. There's about a 30-foot drainage easement that runs between the Nally site and the edge of the development of this property that is not going to be disturbed. So we're 30 or 40 feet away from the Nally property line.
So, so if they're taking up the monitoring wells, how are they going to monitor it?
Well, monitoring wells are put in during a particular period when they're studying the site. The monitoring wells aren't permanently there. And my understanding is that the EPA is, is satisfied that the monitoring wells can be removed. Some, the ones that are in the drainage easement will probably stay. We're not going to be grading that part of it. There's three or four of them that are actually on the property that I believe the EPA is going to allow them to remove. But the whole, the whole site, the whole site is still being monitored. The superfund site's still being monitored. These were some monitoring wells, and for all I know, I don't know who put them in, for all I know, they were put in to satisfy the buyers of this property that the property could be developed.
Do you have documentation of that?
I have an EPA report that I could provide. Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I, this is, I'm, I'm not satisfied with that, Chris. I, the, to remove the wells, and then now you're saying it's probably, and I know this is maybe not your area expertise?
It's not.
But I thought that these sites are always going to be monitored, because if they're not, it's going to be create danger to the community.
Well, once again, the contaminated, the contamination levels were 30 feet below the surface of the ground. And so there's nothing anywhere near where kids are going to be playing, where excavation's going to be done for foundations, or for water, or sewer for that matter. So there's going to be nothing that deep.
This goes back to my question about resiliency.
Right.
If we have a storm, or could not, it doesn't have to even be, I think, a category one, but, and, and it's flooding there. It doesn't seep through, it's capped enough, there's no water going to get down there to bubble this back up where it's contaminated?
My understanding of the capping is the capping's been done in accordance with EPD requirements, or EPA requirements, and that the capping is, is sufficient to keep any additional contamination from leaving the site. I don't know how long the contamination that was found 30 feet deep has been there. I have no idea.
Yeah, well, okay. Well, I can't support this till I hear from EPA or EPD about that.
Well, if EPA is willing to let the wells be removed, isn't that saying that they're satisfied that there's no need for future monitoring?
I don't know because they're satisfied. That doesn't mean, because they, they have allowed this contamination to stay here, but the community has said we wanted it removed. Actually, this Board of Commissioners, we did a joint letter with the city saying we wanted it, contamination to be removed. And so I would have a few more questions for EPA, EPD, about the monitoring wells being removed, and how they're going to continue to monitor the site? And what is going to happen if we have a storm?
The superfund site will continue to be monitored, correct?
That is correct. Yes, this is a superfund site.
This is the well that's on the other side.
I need to hear from EPA or EPD.
All right.
And I'm not trying to be difficult with this, Chris. I, I, I don't mind approving this, but I just need some more assurance by them.
Well, can, could I ask a question? Can we go forward with the rezoning and then deal with this EPA issue before they can pull building permits or any other permits on the site? I'm sorry.
Yeah, this site will still have to go through construction plans application, and that can be addressed at that time.
That's fine, and we could do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this is a public?
Can I make one other point about the site plan? He showed the, the pond that's shown was just representational. It's, it's not going to be that large. We've, we've worked out the, the actual drainage with the engineering department, and we're going to shrink that pond up some and shallow it up some. Part of that is to stay as far away as we, as we possibly can from that 30-foot-deep contamination zone.
Do you know how deep that pond is?
It's, it's just a representation. There's been no engineering done on this yet, so I, it's probably going to be about maybe five feet deep below the water line, below, below the water level, so it's not going to be very deep. Thanks.
All right. Commissioners, we're ready to open the public hearing. All right, this is a public hearing for ZM 5506 240 Merchant's Way Rezone. Anyone that wishes to come forward and speak in opposition, please come forward and state your name for the record. And you have five minutes.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Maggie Van Campport with Altamah Riverkeeper, and I was not planning to speak on this tonight, but I appreciate Mr. Booker bringing up these concerns about the superfund site. I'm not the expert to speak on this, but I'd second all of those concerns that it needs to be looked into. In December of 2021, Glen Environmental Coalition published a report that a plume of benzene has escaped, so it was considered a capped and secured superfund site. And there's since been evidence that it is not secure. And there is benzene leaching out of that site, which can come up through any opening seats, pipes, into the residential areas nearby, as well as contaminate groundwater. So there are definitely valid concerns to be considered by the developer, as well as by the community as to whether that's a safe place to put another residential property. So, that's all.
I have a question. Are you speaking tonight as an individual, or are you speaking as riverkeepers, representing riverkeepers, riverkeepers?
I am speaking as a local environmental advocate with a concern for the community health of people living in Glen County.
So you're speaking as an individual?
Either way is fine.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishes to speak in opposition to ZM 5506? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Anyone that wishes to speak in favor of ZM 5506? To speak in favor, ZM 5506. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you. Put the motions up for us, please.
I just have one comment based on the information that was just presented. That certainly needs to, we need to find out about that. If it, if that's accurate, then that, you really need to deal with that and before we issue any building permits.
We can certainly do that, Commissioner.
I didn't hear you.
We can certainly do that.
All right. I move to approve ZM 5506 with the following conditions. That prior to issuing building permits, that information is provided to the Board of Commissioners regarding if the site, the super fund site is capped and no leakage is, or contaminated water or chemicals are present. Is that good enough?
So if I understand that, Commissioner Booker, you're asking that the super fund site be kept? And evidence of that, or just this site?
No, no, it's about the super fund site that's next to it.
Are you making that this rezoning contingent upon those conditions?
No.
Or is it the-
I don't mean to speak for you. Before the site plan is approved or building permits are issued, that you have a clarification, is how I understood.
Which would happen anyway.
We're going ahead with the rezoning, right?
Right.
But before they can build on it, we need to know if there's leakage from the super fund, adjacent super fund site.
Right.
If that makes sense.
It does. Thank you.
I don't want to slow down the-
Right, right. I just want to make that clarification, right.
But I just want to make sure it's going to be safe for the people who live there in the surrounding area.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Booker to approve with conditions, second by Commissioner Rofoski. Mr. Monford, have we stated? And motions in proper order?
I've got a question. Isn't there an apartment complex right to the right of this? I know Nally's storage yards to the left.
That's our legacy apartments.
Yeah.
It's to the east of the site.
And there was no issue when they were built?
I can't speak to that.
I mean, far as we know. And I know I've been out to that property because it's one of the largest homeless in Camden-Sigleton County. Right now, there's probably 50 to 100 folks living out there. And we had a shooting stabbing there a couple of months ago. So I believe this apartment, you know, as the motions presented, where was the concern when legacy apartments was being designed, built, whatever? I think we need to move forward with this because I believe the developers, the builders, will take into account what the EPA, EPD is going to give them. They're not going to put people in danger. And like I said, legacy apartments is right there. So that's why I feel about, which is curious.
And my comments to that is, first of all, I'm going on the information that was presented tonight. I mean, I guess we would have to go back to see if I was on the commission when legacy was approved and, and what were. And since this is not right by the contaminated site, that would have made a difference. But the information presented tonight sounds like there may be some leakage since then. I don't know when the leakage started, and that's my concern.
All right, Commissioners, we have a proper motion and a second before us. Are you ready to vote? Or any other questions? Reread the motion. Commissioner Booker, do you want to restate your motion, or do we want to read it back? Or you want me to state it as I understand it, or?
You can state it.
All right. Well, you have a motion to approve ZM 5506 with the following condition. That before building permits are issued on this site, that clarification would be received from the EPA as to whether the super fund site has been capped and if there's any leakage on the current properties.
Of the super fund site.
All right. That's the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? That's five, four, two against. All right. I don't believe we're heading to one sign-up for public comment for tonight. We do have need to go into executive session for land use, property acquisition. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, motion to go into executive session-
Second.
For property use and land, for land-
Acquisition.
Acquisition.
Yeah. All right, have a motion by Commissioner Rofoski, a second by Commissioner Booker to go into executive session. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, we stand reassessed. Are we back on? Need a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Booker, a second by Commissioner Rofoski. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Anything else to come before the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the county attorney's recommendation for property acquisition.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofoski, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the attorney's recommendation on property acquisition. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Commissioners to approve the executive session minutes from July 20th, 2023, executive session.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofoski, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the minutes of executive session. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is six, four, and one abstention? All right, any other business to come before the commission?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Rofoski, a second by Commissioner Clark to adjourn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.